Good morning.
My name's Rob Schofield. I'm the director of North Carolina Policy Watch. I hope some of you have checked out our website before, or maybe even subscribed to our newsletters. I know we have some of the contributors to our website in the room, and I'm glad to meet some of them and see some of them. But anyway, Phil, check us out, enzypolicywatch.com. We'd love to have you. I'm incredibly impressed with this group and with Public Schools First, having been there probably since the beginning myself. Delighted to see so many of you out here this morning. This room, though, I must say, every time I speak at the McKimmin Center, I sort of feel like there's that, remember the old Apple commercial from 1984 where the person, I'm hoping no one's going to run down the aisle and throw a hammer at the screen or something like that. But anyway, it's a delight to be with you this morning. When Lynn Edmonds and the great folks of Public Schools First asked me to help welcome you this morning, I was both honored and a little perplexed. Yes, I had been there back in 2009 at most of those early church basement meetings at which the seed that ultimately grew into PSFNC was first germinated. And yes, I wrote and about and attended many of the early school board meetings that took place in Wake County as after a group of far-right board members in the fluke election of 2009 took over the board and tried to tear down a lot of stuff that had been painstakingly put together in Wake over the years. And yes, we do cover education policy at Policy Watch and have employed a series of fabulous education reporters, Lindsey Wagner, Billy Ball, who's now our managing editor, Greg Childress, who's currently our education reporter. They are doing a great job on that beat. But all that said, when I really got to thinking about what I might be able to say and add to today's event, an event packed with amazing all-stars from the education policy realm, my colleague Chris Nordstrom, who's, I hope you've read, Chris's amazing report, The Unraveling, which is really a brilliant summary of the demise of our commitment to public education in North Carolina. It occurred to me that maybe what I might be best able to, and most helpful to me to talk about, and is not to try to pretend to be an education expert, but really to talk what I am these days, which is sort of a policy generalist. I spend a lot of time debating the folks over in the far right. I do this thing on UNC Radio where the woman from the Locke Foundation and I debate the issues every week. And so what I want to briefly highlight for you this morning in the brief time we have is to have a thought for you to keep in mind as you go throughout the day. It's a more general matter that I find myself raising in those debates quite often. And what I have to say, actually, might surprise you at first. The subject is the market economy and the free market. We're talking about privatization, right, today? And what the dictionary defines the free market, of course, is an economic system in which prices are determined by unrestricted competition between privately owned businesses. And here's the surprising part. In my judgment, I would say that the free market is one of the greatest inventions in human history. It simply can't be denied that the market economy has spurred remarkable levels of wealth and well-being and innovation that have transformed life on earth. No one has ever invented a better way to incentivize human productivity and ingenuity and wealth generation. There's just simply, there's no denying it. But there are, however, some important caveats to this undeniable truth about the market economy and privatization. And first and foremost is that, amazing and indispensable as it is, the market is not wholly or divine. It was not, as so many of our friends on the right sometimes like to argue, sort of handed down from the Almighty or ordained from on high. The market economy is instead a tool. It's a powerful but imperfect tool. It's a human invention that was developed by humans for the use of humans. And yes, markets can give rise to many incredibly useful things, wealth, technological advances, healthy competition. But markets are also responsible for many, many negative, even terrible consequences as well, including, I believe, the two greatest challenges confronting our species. First, unfettered markets frequently produce environmental devastation. And right now, as we contemplate an existential global environmental crisis in which governments and massive and multinational corporations are putting profit ahead of the long-term health of humanity and the biosphere that sustains all life, we see this stark reality every day, that conflict. And second, and I think this is especially relevant to our conversation today, unfettered markets produce something else. They produce winners and losers. And as we've seen increasingly in recent decades in our society, yawning, obscene, immoral gaps, wealth and income gaps in our society, between the haves and the have-nots. They're directly attributable to unfettered markets. There's a great cartoon, I love this cartoon, it was in The New Yorker a few years ago, and it shows this man, his house is on fire, he's standing in the window, firefighters are arriving with their hoses, and he says, "Oh, no thanks, I'm a libertarian." And really, if you think about it, that sort of gets to the essence of what we're talking about here. As wonderful as it is, in many areas, the market simply doesn't work unless it is very, very carefully regulated. And in my judgment, there's no more obvious example of such an area than public education. As with the firefighter example, and several other basic areas of human well-being, fresh water, clean air, public safety, basic public infrastructure, health access, it simply doesn't make sense to have winners and losers in public education. Can market forces play a role? Sure, in limited, carefully monitored and regulated circumstances. But for both moral and practical reasons, it's absolutely essential that we strive to make everyone a winner in public education. And that's why it's so absolutely essential that we combat the forces of privatization and segregation, two phenomena that are guaranteed to produce winners and losers. And while we must harbor no illusions about our schools and their history, particularly the history of white supremacy culture that has been dominant for hundreds of years in our country, it was dominant in 2009, it remains dominant today, even in many of our best public schools, we must also have no illusions about our next steps. And although he was a deeply flawed man in many respects, Winston Churchill once made an extremely insightful observation about government. He said that, "No one pretends that democracy is perfect or all-wise. Indeed, it has been said that democracy is," and here's the best part, he says, "Democracy is the worst form of government, except for all the other forms that have ever been tried." And so it is with public and integrated public schools. We know they're not perfect, far from it. We also know that they, but we also know that they remain one of the last best hopes for building a genuinely free, equitable, and sustainable society. The moms and dads, mostly moms, actually, who gathered in that church basement a decade ago understood this simple truth and made it their guide star as they went about the business of successfully resisting the crude privatization and resegregation effort that took place here in Wake County. They and the people who joined them and kept it front and center in their collective consciousness in the years since, as they built Public Schools First North Carolina and other groups around, like it around the state, also kept it front and center. And all of us must keep our eyes fixed on this truth today as we move forward to do battle with often sophisticated and very well-funded set of adversaries. As Ta-Nehisi Coates, who I guess is actually going to be in Raleigh in a couple of weeks, noted in the conclusion of a speech he gave a few years back entitled On Race in America, he said, "Look at the long history, your ancestors' history, look at your fight. You're more than capable of taking it on." And then only option, he said, we have is to quote, I think he said it seven times, "Fight, fight, 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 fight." I believe that that's, we're in an existential battle right now for the future of our society. The fight that we're having right here in North Carolina to preserve our public schools, to rebuild them, to keep them as a shared public enterprise is at the core of that fight for the future of our society. So I think today is going to be an incredibly important moment. It's a moment of celebration for this fine organization and for looking forward and for building on the success of the last few years. I welcome you to being here today. I'm honored to be with you and look forward to hearing what so many of our speakers have to say and look forward to talking to you during some of the breaks. Thanks very much.
I have a couple of housekeeping things to, oop, well, I didn't mean for that to happen. Couple of housekeeping things to share. The bathrooms, the men's room is out the door and on this side of the room. The women's is around on the other side of this conference room. And we certainly have plenty of refreshments for you, so please feel free to get up and move about as needed. Also, if you don't have a folder, if you didn't get a folder when you came in this morning, please see someone in the back and we'll get one for you. That's got the agenda as well as our speaker bios, so that you can see who we're talking with this morning. Our first panel is a view from the school board, and we have Carol Sawyer from Charlotte Mecklenburg. We have Malachay Woodbury from Winston-Salem Forsyth County. We have Christine Kushner from Wake County. They are going to make a few remarks about how privatization is impacting our school systems, and then we'll open it up for Q and A.
Good morning. I serve on the school board in Charlotte Mecklenburg. I'm a district representative, representing East Charlotte, which is one of the more racially, racially, ethnically diverse parts of the city. It's one of the immigrant corridors in terms of housing in Charlotte Mecklenburg. And I'm pleased that you'll be hearing from one of our star teachers, Justin Parmenter, in the next session. And so, just a little bit about CMS. CMS is always sort of bouncing back and forth in Wake, whether we're the largest or second largest school district. I think we're in our probably the second largest, about 146,000 students. We are roughly, I think it's 29% white, about the same now, Latino. We have a rapidly growing Latino population and the majority African-American. However, in Mecklenburg County, as in many other places, our housing patterns are hyper-segregated. So our schools now, by and large, reflect that segregation. Charlotte Mecklenburg has a long history of tension over community integration. We are the county that produced Swan versus Board of Education, which created an integrated school system, and that was undone in 1999 with the Capuchin case. But efforts, Mecklenburg County has the city of Charlotte and six towns that surround the center city. So there are three northern towns and three southern towns. And demographically, the towns are both whiter and more affluent than the rest of the county. And there have been many efforts over time for the towns to secede from CMS. There have been various efforts over time to break off from CMS under the pretense that it was too big, but they're generally veiled covers for, we want our kids to go to our schools and not have to mix with other kids from other parts of town. In 2007, the town of Huntersville, which is one of the wealthier northern towns, actually did a study on secession. And then town board member Charles Jeter and Janet Stoner, who had been CMS's chief financial officer and was now chief financial officer of the town, did extensive research and tried to figure out what they would have to do and how much it would cost to produce, to create a school district in the northern part of the county. And after a lot of research, they found that their current local tax rate of 30 and a half cents per hundred would have to rise to $1.20 per hundred in order to fund a local small school district in Huntersville. That information has been lost to the ages of time because Huntersville is continuing to push for a secession move. Now, there's, in the legislative action in the last couple of years, there's been a sort of workaround to secession and creating an LEA. And that is to create a new kind of charter school. Charter schools exist all over North Carolina, and in theory, any student in North Carolina can go to any charter school across the state. Maybe even across county lines, doesn't matter. Representative Bill Brawley, or Senator Bill Brawley, who represents the southern part of Mecklenburg County, introduced a new kind of charter school, one called a municipal charter school, that would allow towns, actually, just four of the towns in Mecklenburg County, to create their own charter schools, operate their own charter schools. And the big difference is that students who live in those towns have priority for admission to the charter school. So for instance, if Matthews opened a charter school, students who live within the town of Matthews would have first priority, and if you lived anywhere else, you'd, you know, only on space available basis. This is a huge departure because frankly, the rest of Mecklenburg County, the county funds that pass through CMS and go to charter schools come from all over the county. But with municipal charters, the money would come from all over the county, but that resource would only be available to students within that town. So the other, that is, that legislation was enacted. At this point, none of the towns have opted to open a charter school. It's looking like one of the northern towns, Cornelius, is less interested in becoming a charter school, or creating a charter school. And we're still waiting on some of the other towns to act. The other part of the legislation with municipal charters, in addition to giving municipalities the ability to create a charter with priority admission, they also gave local localities the ability to levy tax for local schools. So, and this is actually available statewide. So in theory, Charlotte Mecklenburg schools could go to the city of Charlotte and say, you know, "You can now give us tax money." And that's a very new thing. So they had to do that in order to allow these towns to fund schools. Right now, the, there are some big hurdles for towns to create their own charter schools. First, they can't just hire a charter school operator to come in and do it. That is not allowed in the legislation. The other challenge is that they cannot incur debt in opening these charter schools. So for a town to open a charter school, they have to have cash on hand for the entire The threat of municipal charters is actually what the towns are using mostly to try and intimidate Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. It's not clear to me that they can, in reality, open a charter school, but they use, especially a couple of the towns, use the threat of a charter school to impede pupil assignment So they are, the town of Matthews, for instance, has repeatedly said that, you know, "If our students aren't allowed to just go to Matthews schools, we will form a municipal charter." Huntersville in the north is saying similar things. In response to the passage of the Municipal Charter Act, CMS responded to the towns by creating, passing what we call the Municipal Concerns Act. And this created something the towns had all asked for, which is a committee of representatives from each of the six towns in the city of Charlotte and a school board member to come together and talk about the issues facing the entire county system and the towns and hear their concerns. But we also added in a provision that didn't make the towns so happy, and that we said that we would prioritize future capital expenditures in places that did not have the ability to open their own charter schools. In other words, as a school board, we did not see it as fiscally responsible for us to open, say, a new elementary school in the town of Matthews, when they could at any time open a municipal charter school that would, in effect, empty out our public school and be a waste of our resources, our very scarce resources, to meet the needs all over the county. That has raised the hackles of the towns, because they want us to build in their town, but they want it kind of old ways. They want to be able to threaten us with the municipal charter, but at the same time have schools built in their area. So that's, we are right now at a, I won't say a standoff, but there are a couple of towns that have kind of dug in on the municipal charters and a couple that are probably going to come to us, come to the school board and disavow opening a municipal charter. And that is, that is very good news for us. Frankly, the other good news is that the legislator, Bill Brawley, who was the proponent and passed the legislation, was defeated by Rachel Hunt last year. And the mayoral election in the town of Matthews is actually about the municipal charters and the relationship of Charlotte Mecklenburg schools and Matthews. So the incumbent mayor, who has been one of the big proponents of municipal charters, was just in a runoff election, runoff primary, I guess it was a primary, sort of an oddly timed primary for their general election coming up. And he lost, I mean, he made it through the runoff. He will be in the November election, but he was soundly beaten by one of the town commissioners who opposed opening a municipal charter. So we have some hope there that the people in the towns actually don't want to participate in municipal charters and were ignored by their town leadership. So right now, we're in a, hoping that the charter, municipal charter schools don't go any further in Mecklenburg County. And we need to make sure that that kind of legislation isn't enacted in other places because it's sort of a backdoor way to break up LEAs into component arts. I'll be happy to take questions later, but that's municipal charter schools.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
First, just let me say that I do come in the spirit of Nicole Hannah-Jones, who was just in Winston-Salem this past Thursday night, and I come in the spirit of Mr. Chris Nordstrom. And I, you know, when you have something to say that's going to be controversial, you start blaming other people. So you can share some of the stress with others. But I say that because in the spirit of those two people, we just need to feel uncomfortable where we are about public school education, so that we understand the urgency of acting and doing something better. I will just like to say, everyone just calls me Shay. And I am from Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and I do want to thank Yvonne Brennan for bringing me here, and of course, Public Schools First North Carolina. I am very honored to be here and represent our school district. And I would also like to thank Mr. Stu Egan, who is one of our teachers in Winston-Salem Forsyth County, you know, a lone veteran and just an advocate, a professional and a model of what good public school teaching is about. So I would like to say that, just a little bit about Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, it's the fourth largest in our state and about 78, 76, depending on, when you look at the data, largest in our nation. Our demographics is just about a third, third, and third. African-American, white, Hispanic, by way of our largest subgroups. We have about 55,000 students, about 7,000 employees. Ironically, we only have four charter schools. That's interesting, but I'll be able to explain why maybe here in a second, and one quote-unquote lab school. And that's a bit different for us. I will say that when I came on as the first African-American chair of our school board, Winston-Salem Forsyth County merged in 1963, there had not been an African-American chair since then. So there was a lot of celebration, but I think also a lot of, "What in the world is she going to do?" kind of thoughts. And so, at the privilege of the chair, I did start two committees. And one was the Climate, Community, and Equity Committee. And that didn't get me in as much trouble as this School Choice Committee. And Stu will tell you, and Mr. Donald Dunn, who is also here from Winston-Salem Forsyth County, and I think he serves on the board of this great organization, will tell you that this School Choice Committee, you know, we received a little stress from the General Assembly. We had a proposed House deal, I don't remember if it was 518 or 519, but essentially Forsyth County would be the only school district in North Carolina because of this School Choice Committee allegedly, that would have to go to our county commissioners to get approval for school assignment. And so I had to call, I won't say the names, but I had to call the General Assembly reps of our county and have coffee and say, "Hold up, don't get excited. Let's just get through the process of looking at school choice so that we can do something better for children." So what I would like to do is read to you all, and I hope you can bear with me, a paper that I co-authored with Dr. Edmond Bell from Winston-Salem State University. He is the former chair of education, and we also, of course, received some consultation, again, from Chris Nordstrom, about school choice in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. So it reads, "School Choice Empowers Parents to Decide Which School Best Meets Their Child's Needs Regardless of Their Address or Income. This movement, influenced and partially led by parents, is transforming K-12 education across the nation and revolutionized it in North Carolina. Each year in our state, K-12 educational options for families continue to grow. According to an article in the Charlotte Observer, nearly one out of five students in North Carolina attend a non-traditional public school. Hence, the percentage of the state's 1.8 million students attending traditional public schools is about 81%. McShane and DePerna describe choice this way: Within states and districts, each passing year offers more educational options for students and families. Families can choose from traditional public schools, magnet or specialty schools, career technical education-focused schools, public charter schools, private schools, or a host of decentralized education providers. From an educational perspective, school choice is a tool to try to transform or at least reform public school. Ideally, parents become active agents and stakeholders in education, which is welcomed in public education. Research informs us that parent involvement has a positive influence on student achievement and the overall culture of a school. Another element of choice is that it considers the need of the student. Personalized learning is a method of instruction that considers the voice and choice of students to not only meet the academic needs of students, but also their interests. Personalized learning proposes optimal curriculum and instruction for each student. Therefore, from the academic perspective, school choice extends the means to provide a good education to every student. Ideally, it is a good thing. However, the benefits of this good thing intended for every student has become progressive for only some childrens. The intent of this paper is to inform the Winston-Salem Forsyth County community about school choice, so that every child in the public schools can benefit from the right choice. In 2016, the Washington Post reported on a report released from the government and the county after 62 years to the day of the Brown decision that the proportion of schools segregated by race and class, where more, where more than 75% of children receive free or reduced-priced lunch and more than 75% are black or Hispanic, climbed from 9% to 16% of schools between 2001 and 2014. The number of most intensively integrated schools with more than 90% of low-income schools and students of color more than doubled over that period. Chris Nordstrom, policy analyst of the North Carolina Justice Center, wrote a report stymied by segregation published from the Education and Law Project. He highlighted North Carolina's history about school segregation. The state's subsequent plan for opposing integration, known as the PRLS Plan, allowed districts to shutter schools that became integrated and provided state funding vouchers to allow to allow white students to flee integrated schools. The Piersel Plan, which required a constitutional amendment, was overwhelmingly supported by North Carolina voters. The Piersel Plan was finally declared unconstitutional in nineteen sixty-nine in Goodman versus Johnston County Board of Education. In nineteen seventy-one, a team of NAACP lawyers led by Julius Chambers successfully argued in Swain v. Charlotte Mecklenburg of Board of Education that the district had to use student assignment and busing to integrated schools. Subsequently, Charlotte became a national leader for school integration. Progress was sidetracked, tied in two thousand one when the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals declared Charlotte Mecklenburg's racial integration plan illegal. Since then, school boards have swung back and forth in their willingness to use school assignment plans or manage public school choice to create a racially and economically balanced public schools. Thus, many argue the choice strategy has been used to avoid proactive efforts to integrate public schools. This is crucial because of the evidence-based progress of integrated schools, but the grave consequences of segregated public schools. Norstrom also reports the following, "School segregation is associated with increasing racial achievement gaps, dropout rates, and incarceration rates. The negative impacts of school segregation are effectively highlighted by a two thousand thirteen Harvard study examining the impact of the resegregation of schools in Charlotte Mecklenburg. The end of the integrated busing program in Charlotte led to an increase in racial achievement gaps as well as increased arrest and incarceration. These results are consistent with national research that finds within district segregation is the biggest predictor of racial achievement gaps. Additional research has shown that the end of school desegregation orders led to increased dropout rates for black and Hispanic students. The growing share of racially and economically isolated schools should be a warning sign that our school system is becoming more unequal, not less. We know that on average racially and economically isolated schools attract and retain fewer higher-performing teachers and suffer from greater teacher and principal turnover. Such schools are more likely to be older, dilapidated buildings where the students generally have less access to advanced course offering and extracurricular activities. It is unclear how much of the increase in racially and economically isolated schools is due to education policy decisions like school choice, school assignment plans, school district borders, et cetera. How much is attributable to demographics and other policies outside of the control of school leadership? North Carolina's public schools have experienced substantial demographic changes over the past ten years with the share of students of color increasing from forty-four percent of all traditional public schools to over fifty-one percent. Over the same period, the number of students qualifying for free or reduced lunch has risen from forty-eight percent to sixty percent. District exposure index data confirmed the growing isolation of low-income students and students of color. Between two thousand six oh seven and sixteen seventeen, students of color became less likely to interact with white students in one hundred, in six of one hundred and fifteen districts. During the same period, students from low-income families became less likely to interact with higher-income students in one hundred and eight of one hundred and fifteen districts. By contrast, there are considerable benefits associated with school integration. For instance, a study in Maryland found that students from low-income families that were randomly assigned to low-poverty schools experienced large persistent test score gains compared to similar students assigned to high-poverty schools. Another study estimates that desegregation efforts of the nineteen seventies decreased the dropout rates for black students by two to three percentage points. The benefits of school integration can be quite substantial over the long term, with one study finding that attending a desegregated school increased annual earnings by thirty percent for black men. None of these studies find any negative impacts for white students. In fact, a recent federal study found that white student performance remained similar whether they went to a school that was overwhelmingly white or one that was overwhelmingly black. The positive impacts of school integration extend beyond test scores. Students attending integrated schools become less prejudiced, increase cross-racial trust and friendships, and enhance their capacity for working with others. The SHOT Foundation rated the states on these criteria for school choice. States are rated on the extent to which they have instituted policies and practices that lead toward fewer democratic opportunities and more privatization, as well as the quadrils that they have or have not put into place to protect the rights of students, communities, and taxpayers. The grade for North Carolina on these criteria was F. The evaluation was based on the implementation of school choice by large school districts of the state, like Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, that implement a student assignment plan based on choice, which is also known as intraschool choice. The implementation of this policy had an impact on the number of low-income or Title I schools. During the two thousand eighteen-nineteen academic year, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School lists eighty schools on our website and forty-two Title I schools. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools operationally defines Title I schools in this way, Title I. Schools must have a percentage of low-income students that is at least as high as the district's overall percentage, have at least thirty-five percent low-income students. Districts rank schools by poverty and serve them in ranked order until funds run out. Schools with seventy-five percent or more of the students on free or reduced-priced lunch must be served. More than half the schools in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools have a high, heavy concentration of low-income students. The implementation of the Choice People Assignment Plan in Winston-Salem Forsyth County has produced a school system that produced only fifty-two point eight percent of third graders reading at grade level, showing slow growth and even some decline in this area in recent years. Moreover, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools facilitates approximately thirty failing schools, most of which are in District One area or the inner city, all of which are Title I. A civil rights discrimination complaint has been filed with the United States Department of Justice against Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. And stymied by segregation as measured by the racial and income-based similarity indexes, Forsyth County is one of the ten most racially and economically segregated school districts of the state. However, as an effective and highly qualified teacher would proclaim and progressive school districts were advertised, failure is not an option. Based on nationally recognized standards, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools can strive to achieve and become an A-graded school choice district that leads our state to the same status. Scholars of evidence-based research report clear paths to achieving successful school choice programs. Lastly, what I would like to do is just highlight some of the tools that Chris Norstrom and Linda Darling-Hammond highlighted. So Norstrom maintains that the main tool that school district leader policymakers can employ is income-based student attendance policies. Wake County notably implemented income-based student assignment from two thousand to two thousand ten. Many districts across the country followed Wake County's lead after Supreme Court declared race-based attendance policies unconstitutional in two thousand seven. Wake County's income-based student attendance policy ensured no school would consist of more than forty percent students receiving free or reduced lunch, no more than twenty-five percent of students performing below grade level. He also talks about what principal teachers and other educators can do by playing a role ensuring our schools are fully integrated. Educators need to work to ensure enrollment and advanced courses and gifted programs reflect the demographics of the school population. Parents and community leaders can play a vital role in fighting for the integration of our public schools by advocating for the policy options presented in this report and paying attention to how school enrollment decisions of their own children impact other children in the community. Voters can play a significant role. A recent study of North Carolina School Board election data shows that electing at least one Democrat, that was interesting, leads to student reassignment that is eighteen percent closer to achieving racial parity for each school. And so in the paper that became an op-ed in one of our newspapers in Winston-Salem Forsyth County, the op-ed ended with, what if we had a majority of Democrats? So in the past twenty years, almost in Winston-Salem Forsyth County, at least fifteen had already been Republican-dominated. And so in two thousand eighteen, we were able to flip it and became majority Democrat. And so take that for what it's worth, because I'm a social studies teacher and I don't really get into Republican is better than a Democrat. I just, you know, believe in the democratic process. But lastly, Linda Darling-Hammond talks about lesson number one and how to create systems of schools worth attending for all. Make all schools worthy of being chosen. All options need to be adequately funded and capable of meeting the educational needs of low-income students, English learners, students with disabilities. Lesson two, ensure access to high-quality schools for all. Lesson three, promote diversity and inclusion. Number four, leave no school behind. In conclusion, public education exists for the good of our whole society. It is one of the main pillars of an advancing democracy. Public schools are not perfect because of the awesome task to try to educate every child, rich or poor, black or white, Hispanic or non-Hispanic, LGBTQ plus or not, male or female, interested or apathetic, good or bad, and the list goes on, every generation. However, since eighteen twenty-one and the founding of our nation's first public school in Boston, Massachusetts, educators, families, and communities have worked to improve public schools so that our society could be good, productive, and civil. The Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board will have an opportunity to promote public schools for every student and help provide parents with the best choice, a good public school education throughout our county. All stakeholders in our community will need to work together to make this goal a reality. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Christine Pushner. It's an honor to be here with two colleagues from the School Board, Carolyn Shay. The great thing about going third is that they said a lot. I have served on the Wake County Board of Education since two thousand eleven. I was in this room when we had that conference ten years ago. And we have seen a lot of the changes that have come in the last decade with trying to stabilize student assignment in Wake County. And we have bipartisan support for doing sound student enrollment policies. My colleague, Bill Fletcher, is here, as well as I saw Roxy Cash, Jim Martin, and the others. My former colleague, Susan Evans, are welcome here. And I hope all of you stay for the rest of the conference till one o'clock. You're going to see the rock star teachers that have already been mentioned addition from Wake County. We have Angie Scali. And from my home county of Cumberland, we have Jamaica Kelly here. So you're going to have a panel of some amazing teachers as well as researchers. So please stay till the end till one. And being on a school board, one of the things we are charged with is being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So I wanted to touch on the important investment that our community makes in our public schools and why those taxpayers deserve sound investment in their public schools. And we have to remember that the number seventy percent of those taxpayers do not have school-aged children. And those taxpayers and our state also deserve sound public schools and to become diverse, responsive, and have graduates that are ready to take on the task of carrying on our civic and our economic society. And so public schools have that task. And our Constitution dictates that we have a unified system of schools that provides that for our community. Public schools, to me, is a merit good. It is worth the investment of our taxpayers. And so as a school board member, I have, and my colleagues, we've been charged with making sound investments in our public school system for the decades to come so that our students and our graduates are equipped for the world. And so currently, we have worked hard to be good, to be, make sound decisions, but one of the key pressures is the privatization of our public schools. In our last year's budget, we had an increase of seven million dollars. That's a pass-through to charter schools in Wake County. That's now totaling in this year's budget forty-five million dollars that we just passed through from our local taxpayers, that's just the local piece, and our local taxpayers that have had pressures on their property taxes. We passed through forty-five million dollars to more than seventy charters that claim to have Wake County students. And we have no accountability for that money. Just as another aside, last year when we had to go to our county commissioners and ask for an increase in our budget, we asked for about forty-five million dollars as an increase. So this is real pressure from local taxpayers on our school budgets. And one would ask, what do we get for the money that we're spending on charter schools? And as a school board member, I don't have a good sense to say, other than there's, because charter schools were founded in the nineties to bring innovation to our school, to our public schooling. And many early supporters of charter schools on both sides, both Democrat and Republicans, a bipartisan issue, were excited about innovative ideas. Since the cap has been taken off in North Carolina, we've seen a steep increase in charter schools. And I would argue that they're, we're not seeing innovation. In fact, we're seeing what Shay and Carolyn also talked about is threats of lacking change in order to, you know, if you don't, if you, if you want innovation in the public, in public education today, I would say that's happening in the Wake County public schools. We are working hard to change curriculum to be for the twenty-first century. We're working hard to have choice with purpose. We have a very vibrant magnet system. Our magnet schools recently received dozens of accolades and awards from the National Magnet School Association. We have overwhelmingly, our teachers are, ninety-seven percent of Wake County public school teachers have met or exceeded the North Carolina Academic Code standards. That was during the seventeen-eighteen school year. We continue to lead the nation in nationally board-certified teachers here in Wake County public schools for the last fourteen years. We have more nationally board-certified teachers than any district in the country. A majority of our schools remain very racially and economically balanced, and we accept all students. We receive students regardless of ability, motivation, as Shay put, we work hard to meet the needs of every child every day. That's been part of our culture. On the other hand, the last ten years with the expansion of charter schools in Wake County, we are seeing an increase in resegregation, whether intentionally or unintentionally. That has been the outcome for many of the charter schools here in Wake. And we are not seeing much in innovation. I think some of the curriculum that we see in charter schools are much more traditional curriculum, more twentieth-century models. So I would say that the innovation that's happening in public schooling is happening in the Wake County public school system, not in this privatization of charter examples. And another point I wanted to make is that there's, as I said, there's increased competition for these state and local dollars. And I think we owe it to the taxpayers to be very sound in how we're making those investments. Wake County continues to grow. We are, we are currently the largest school system in North Carolina, about fourteenth to fifteenth in the U.S. And we're, have now a hundred and ninety-one schools, about ten thousand, eleven thousand teachers, and twenty thousand employees. So we are an economic presence in Wake County. And, and we are a good investment for the taxpayers of Wake County. There was a few years ago, a study that Mike Walden at NC State did for our, for our school system and found that for every dollar that is invested in Wake County's operating, operational budget, there's a multiplier effect of a dollar seventy-five. So I think that's a pretty good investment for taxpayers, as well as getting a school system that includes every child every day and works to meet the needs of every child every day. So I think one of the solutions to looking at, we see the data that's across, on the, that's been posted on the walls. I think it's important to look at what taxpayers are getting for their investments, not only our public education systems, but in the charter schools that are, some twenty percent of whom are now for-profit charter schools. What are we getting for investment in charters and vouchers? And I think it would be a wise time now, ten years after the cap has been lifted from charters, for the legislature to institute a recess on charters so that they can do a study of what the taxpayers are getting for their charter school investments, for their investments in vouchers. What are we, what are the outcomes? It's not clear the student accountability, the accountability for... It's not clear the student accountability, the accountability for the monies that are being put into these schools. So are there better outcomes? Some of the data is suggesting that charter schools are not doing any better than public schools in student outcomes. So what is the purpose of charter and what is the purpose of choice in our school systems? So I think we statewide would be wise to take a break, take a recess, and have some statewide analysis of what's going on, both with the voucher programs and the charter
Thank you all.